Now starting the January second, twenty twenty five meeting of the Mount Pleasant Planning Commission is now called to order. Commissioner Devaney?
Here.
Commissioner Friedrich?
Here.
Commissioner Havelz? Absent. Commissioner Irwin?
Here.
Commissioner Kingsworthy?
Here.
Commissioner Leish? Absent. Commissioner Ortman? Absent. Madam Vice Chair, um, I'm sorry, we have a quorum. The first item in our agenda is the approval of the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda.
Okay. So Friedrich?
Did you?
Made a motion?
Yes.
Thank you.
Second.
The second item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the December fifth, twenty twenty four Planning Commission meeting. Does anyone have any changes?
Don't we have to vote on the motion first for the agenda?
Oh, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve?
We already have a motion as I can approve the agenda.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. The second item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes from the December fifth, twenty twenty four Planning Commission meeting. Does anyone have any changes they would like to make to the minutes or do we have a motion?
Move to approve the minutes of December fifth, twenty twenty four, regular meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. The next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes from the December fifth, twenty twenty four Planning Commission work session. Do I have a motion or does anyone have any changes they would like to make to the minutes?
Move to approve the work session minutes from December fifth.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion passes. The next item on our agenda is the Zoning Board of Appeals report. Um, since we don't have Mr. Havelz here, I will report that the Zoning Board of Appeals met in December and there was a case that I mentioned in our work session in the December meeting um, about uh drive-through establishment um South Mission Street. Um, fifteen, sixteen, I believe. Um, and the ZBA did approve the variance request, so not the the one that we did uh consider to grant them the administrative waiver for the sixty percent build out, but all the other variances that they've requested, uh the ZBA was able to uh approve that and so you're going to be seeing that site plan coming forward in the next couple of months. And then you can find more information in the minutes of the ZBA meeting in your packet. Um, so the next item on the agenda is the communications. We did receive one communications for one case that we're going to be hearing, SUP twenty five oh one for nine hundred Isabella Court. Um, the comment here um mentions that they do not support the special use permit and that the um eight-unit subdivision restricts um rentals and specifically short-term rentals in that area. So we'll be talking more about that in my presentation after doing some research. And that's that's all we received, uh nothing else. So, alright, so the next item on the agenda is public hearing for SUP dash twenty five oh one, a request for a special use permit for a short-term rental at nine hundred Elizabeth Court. So we introduce the case. Alright, so. Right. The applicant Katie Buddington on behalf of KAK Land LLC is seeking approval for a short-term rental located at nine hundred Elizabeth Court. The plan is to rent the house through Airbnb to visitors of the Mount Pleasant area, ultimately helping bring additional revenue to the city. The existing nine hundred thirty-two square foot house already has a valid rental license through the fire department for no more than one family or two unrelated occupants and is currently classified as a one-family dwelling. The house sits in the end of a cul-de-sac and is accessed through a gravel drive which leads to a parking area that fits uh two vehicles. It has two bedrooms, one bathroom, a living room, a dining room, a kitchen space and a laundry uh room. The applicant is not proposing any building or site alterations at this time as the applicant had already done a few housing and site updates uh for the long-term rental which included a fence uh along the north, south and west property boundaries to provide more privacy and then the east property boundary already provides privacy through trees and landscaping. The land uses on the around the parcel are all single-family dwellings. We have a future land use designation for residential and then the zoning district uh for the parcel and surrounding parcels is CD three suburban character district. Um, and I will mention uh from start just for context purposes, our um office professional here, Susan, did uh do research and there used to be only one um rental, a long-term rental on the north uh property boundaries. Um, and all the other parcels around uh this subject parcel are not currently rentals. Um, so they are single um owner-occupied housing. These are the current conditions viewed from the end of the cul-de-sac at Elizabeth Court looking north. You can see the small yellow sign that I posted there for the land use action. That's uh the indication that the drive is right immediately um on the right side of that sign and that's where you access the parcel through that drive in between the two houses. Once you reach the parcel, this is the current conditions viewed from the property looking northeast to the parking area. It's covered with snow, but that's where there is some gravel um for uh it's a twenty-one by twenty-one gravel space to fit two cars uh in parallel to each other, uh right immediately adjacent to that uh wood fence that you see here in the picture. And that's the house uh in the back. This is the current conditions viewed from the property looking south. And then looking southwest. So these are all the general standards that special use permit must comply with. Um, I initially, I didn't see uh any issues with this proposal except that I believe, you know, as I mentioned before, we don't have a lot of rental housing around this particular house right now, but because the site is um pretty big and the house is small and there aren't any outdoor gathering spaces, um no porches or um any fenced or outdoor area specifically for the aggregation of gas um aside from obviously the yard. Um, I didn't, I didn't think that there could be noise um or any type of nuisance due to the distance between the house and the uh surrounding parcels. And then um traffic was definitely a concern just because we are in the end of a cul-de-sac and you're not supposed to block the street or park cars over there. So one thing that we did talk with the owner was to make sure that the gravel area for parking is enough. Because the house is so small, only two bedrooms, we do not foresee more than two cars needing to park. Um, but either way, the one of the recommendations is to make sure that there is always gravel in that area uh for par- um parking to be compliant with the zoning ordinance requirements. You may recall that we do allow gravel um as a surface treatment for parking in CD three. Um, so um because of that, um and the owner would be, you know, making sure that they have that. Um, and we added in the conditions, I didn't see any other issues in terms of nuisances. Um, and then one thing to note is that the subject law does not meet the minimum law width requirements because again, we're talking about a drive that infracts the street end. Um, and then we have the law width measured usually at the front setback distance. So in this case, we have a very narrow width, um therefore it's not conforming. With that, there is this very first special condition that comes with non-compliant parcels that the Planning Commission does have a little bit more discretion to verify if the area um is suitable for a short-term rental. And then uh alternatively, the Planning Commission also has more discretion to add more conditions to the approval uh due to that non-conformance. And then um these are all uh the other special requirements for short-term rentals. Um, as with any other short-term rental, um something that we note to applicants in the pre-application meeting is that if they do any changes to the dwelling like at a bed- a bedroom or do any sort of expansion, especially outdoor expansions, um they do have to come back for your approval. So that's uh just something to remind ha- all of you. So in terms of the public comments, and let me just get my notes here. So we did have this comment and obviously our department uh did our due diligence to verify um if this restriction on rentals is indeed um something that applies to this parcel more specifically. So um the we did a search in the Isabella County records um to try to find did restrictions that would apply to this parcel. And um we do, we did ask the applicant to provide any information that they could find uh through their title search and all of that. And they were very collaborative with us, they provided answers right away uh to our questions. So one of the items that um was was sent by the applicant to me um as soon as I reached out in the past few days was the declaration of a protective covenant of Elizabeth Court which uh we did provide to all of you uh as a hard a hard copy that's in front of you right now. So that is a document um dated from nineteen fifty-eight.
Sixteen.
And it applies to eight parcels that surround Elizabeth Court. The parcel number five, let me see if I have diagram here. No, I didn't put it in, but there is a diagram um that I could find of Elizabeth Court. Um, the parcel number five that is currently the house on the right from that drive axis is included originally in the Elizabeth Court uh subdivision, but then only a small sliver of that parcel was is part of the subject parcel, if that makes sense. So they carved out a sliver for access from Elizabeth Court to access this parcel that sits behind the original parcel five. Um, I did ask the applicant to check with their title search if uh once that split happened, if all the restrictions from the protective covenant came with it or if perhaps this does not apply. I do not have an answer, a definitive answer on that, but because the document was included in their title search, I believe that it may apply. Um, but that's just something I couldn't um verify. And I will say that um, and I'll just go to the next slide. In terms of the language um in that document, it does not mention a direct prohibition against rentals. Um, however, paragraph twelve suggests the rentals may be However, paragraph 12 suggests that rentals may be in fact permitted due to language related to allowance for rent signs. So we could only really be speculating the accuracy of this argument that because of that sign allowance that long-term rentals or perhaps short-term rentals are allowed. Short-term rentals is a slightly different category, though. We checked with the city attorney on that just to see if we have any findings through other codes and regulations that apply. And Airbnbs or what we call Airbnbs are basically short-term rentals. If there is one particular language that suggests that if you are using a property for over more than 15 days in a calendar year as a short-term rental, it is considered a commercial use and not a residential use. That is basically the best direction that we have at the moment to identify if a short-term rental is or not allowed in the subdivision. What we did was to ask the applicant if they intend to use the parcel for more than 15 days in a calendar year and the answer is yes. So technically speaking, we could be in commercial grounds with the Airbnb proposal, even though the zoning ordinance considers short-term rentals within our residential category in terms of the use table. So while all this research was done to provide you with context, the city attorney really advised the planning commission that you should be waiting regarding these facts, but not necessarily thinking that you need to apply the restrictive covenants. It's not our job basically to enforce the restrictions on parcels. Instead, you should be looking at, does the short-term rental proposal fit within the context of the area? Is it compatible to surrounding land uses? Doing a step back on a citywide perspective, is this a good location for an Airbnb or short-term rental? And then if you would think that it could substantially injure the financial value of surrounding properties. So those findings are part of our special use review process and that's what the city attorney advised the planning commission on. We, again, just re-stating, we're not here to enforce protective covenants. And then in fact, there is this language in the deed restriction itself that basically says that anyone that owns real property within the neighborhood subdivision has the authority to proceed a law or an equity against the persons violating or attempting to violate the declaration to prevent them from violating such declaration or recover damages. So this is the language that exists there and again, it's not the city's obligation to do so. And we cannot, with the language that we have, we cannot for sure determine if short-term rentals are indeed prohibited. So with the analysis that we've conducted, including the analysis of the documents that appeared in front of us in the past few days, overall, I believe that the house in terms of its citywide location, it's close to the public school and Central Michigan. It's again, it's a big lot with a small house. I do not foresee issues through the surrounding neighborhood. And if there are too many complaints, let's say down the line, it is part of our special use permit process to then be able to go after the premises and if they're violating the special use permit conditions, which include ensuring no disturbance to neighboring properties. Its proximity to Mission Street is a plus. We are always trying to bring more customers to our commercial areas. And then the, I already mentioned off-street parking and that I do think that there is enough space there for off-street parking. So with the findings and analysis in the report and my presentation tonight, the step recommendation is still to approve SUP-2501 subject to the following conditions. The applicant shall ensure that the gravel on the existing parking area is compact, smooth, and provides for a stable surface. And two, the applicant shall comply with the requirements of Public Works. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
This deed we have, is that for just that parcel?
No, so this deed restriction is for a total of eight parcels that surround the court. And let me just go to the map that I put here in the beginning of the presentation. So if you look at this map, and I should have explained that with the map on the slide. So this is parcel, original parcel, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. The deed restriction applies to these eight parcels over here. This little sliver of land used to be part of parcel five. Now it's part of the parcel behind parcel five, which is the subject parcel.
Do we have a copy of the deed for the subject parcel?
I do not have that.
That's actually, that little sliver is actually part of that parcel. It's not a right-of-way or an easement.
No, it's part of the parcel.
So it's really not relevant with this original deed restriction on those eight parcels aren't relevant to it?
So this is a question that I had to the applicant in their whole title search. The company that did it did include this document as an attachment. It does refer to it, but I talked with the clerk and assessor's office to see if we had any records of when this parcel was created in that shape and form, the subject parcel. And they were not able to find anything that I could look at to see, to really see if this restrictive restrictions would apply.
Is this still in effect? The eight members haven't voted it to end? Does it automatically renew every five years after 1987 unless they say no? Have they ever held an election to say this is done?
I don't know.
You can't have a landlocked parcel in Michigan. That parcel may have been created to allow access to a road. But there's no record of the creation of that parcel?
The city's office cannot find any.
There's nothing at the county?
I didn't really look for subdivisions. I just worked with the city clerk and assessor's office to see if they could help me out and apparently we were not very good with records before this current clerk.
The records would be at the county with the deeds.
Yeah, I looked at every file that I could find for this and I didn't see anything. Perhaps the applicant could help with that question, but I was not personally able to find the details.
Is the applicant the owner of the entire original parcel five?
No, we have two different owners at the moment. And yeah, just to mention something specific to zoning, we usually do not allow parcels, so we don't allow parcels to not infract a street, but we do allow up to 20% of a subdivision to include parcels kind of like this, that you still have an access, but it's a parcel behind a parcel. So that is something that we do allow. I'm pretty sure when this parcel was created was not this ordinance that was in place. But I could look at the previous ordinance to see how it was, but just to state that.
Does the zoning code or the covenant take precedence? Do you know?
I did not ask the question to the city attorney, but one thing that's very important that I mentioned in the presentation is that anytime that we see, let's say, a rental license coming in, it's not the city's job to look at deed restrictions and enforce those. We only look at zoning code, city code, subdivision law. So that's something the city attorney restated multiple times to me and wanted me to make sure that I pass that along.
Okay, thank you.
Sounds like the perfect case for a court.
Well, because part of the covenant too, it talks about, let's see here. Number six talks about setbacks, those kind of things, which the city has its own setback rules. So I would think that the city zoning code would take precedence over anything or else. If that were the case, then any neighborhood could create any covenant with the number of neighbors and do their own mini zoning all over the city. And I can't imagine that's the way it's supposed to be, but I don't know, maybe that's a loophole that we never explored before.
I think this was written before there were setbacks in the code, so.
Yeah.
The more restrictive one would apply.
Essentially, that second paragraph of the document basically says parties in the covenant are within their rights to try to pursue some kind of, you know, legal mitigation. But clearly, that would be quite limited, I think, by city requirements, so. It's interesting that the first paragraph mentions that it expires in 1987, but automatically renews every five years.
Right. Yeah, and just to mention also in terms of internal communications, I did ask the applicant if they wanted to hold in check with the whole subdivision current owners or postpone this or maybe cancel the application. They still wanted to proceed, even though we don't have the answers to some of the questions that he raised. But from all the documents and research that they've done on their end, they still wanted to proceed. All right, so any other questions on your end? Okay, that case, let's see. All right, so if the applicant is here and would like to speak and present their case, please come to the podium. I do see Katie online. Mary, I don't think it's here. Oh, you're here? Okay, Mary, do you want to come to the podium? You can state your name, address, and then just provide a summary of the proposal and then the commission can ask questions.
Okay, my name is Mary Crudoff and my address is 2420 Coolidge Road, Burton, Michigan. I purchased the property, I believe it was April of 2023. And at the time that I purchased the property, it was advertised as a rental. And so I purchased it and then over the course of almost the last couple of years have used it as a rental, actually put it for sale. And during the course of the time that I put it for sale, my real estate agent had said to me, well, I put it for sale and then I took it off the market and then they contacted me and asked me if I was still interested and I said, no, I think I'll continue it as a rental. And they're like, well, you need a permit for that. And I'm like, yeah, I bought it and it has the permit. I'm like, but maybe I better check on that. So then I called the city and somebody at the city advised me that actually the owner has to continue the rental, the approval for rental. And so that it wasn't actually approved as a rental unless as the new owner, I went forward and applied again. So I applied again for the long-term and received a long-term rental approval. And then I also found out in that process, there's this second that you have to do for this special use permit if I wanted to do short-term and I applied, so that's why I'm here.
Does anyone from the planning commission have questions to the applicant?
Do you have a copy of the deed?
I can get a copy of the deed. I may actually have it on my email because when the questions came up about all of this, I contacted the title company and they did forward all the stuff from the file to me.
Do you know when it was surveyed last?
I do not know that.
All right, any other questions? All right, the applicant can have a seat. And now we will open to the public comment. If there are any members of the public who wish to speak on this item, please come to the podium and state your name and address and you'll be given five minutes to speak. Does anyone here would like to speak?
Hello, my name is Pat Heitman and I am in one of those, in the cul-de-sac. One of those properties is mine and I've been there for a long time.
Can you state your address, please?
911 Elizabeth Court.
Thank you for the record.
I'm against this. Yes, it is a rental. We know that, the eight of us know that there is a rental. And I appreciate that Martha sent in a letter. She had told us that she was doing that and letting you know. She's the longest person to live in the court. We joined in 1994. My in-laws are the ones that helped put together that covenant. I think it was Bill Tennyson that wrote the covenant. And the eight of them put this together so that we could have a single-family home area. We know that we've had rentals, that rental back there. And we've been, the rentals that you've had have been very kind and we've gotten to know them. But Airbnb, I just don't, I just don't see our neighborhood. Long-term rentals is kind of what our community needs. An Airbnb, no. I'm also a teacher in the adult ed program and I have so many students right now that need a place to live. And apartments, a single-family home for my teachers or for my students and there's kids is what this community needs. An Airbnb, no. Short-term rental, no. So Martha and I are definitely against this. Long-term rental would be fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else that wishes to speak tonight? Seeing none, I'm going to check online. Oh.
Is that really a way to distribute it?
Yeah, we did not distribute it beforehand, so we can do a follow-up if that's the wish of the planning commission. Thank you. Okay, so let me check online if we have anyone. I do not see anybody on Zoom with their raise hand feature and nobody's on email. All right. Last question, do we have anybody else wishing to speak tonight? All right, so we'll close. I'll close public comment for this case. Do I have a motion on this item? It's open to discussion.
I don't feel like I really have enough information to make a decision tonight. I would move to postpone this to the February meeting. Hopefully in that time, we'd be able to get some more answers to these questions for us and then I'd feel more confident making a decision one way or another.
I'm not comfortable in voting for a variance in a parcel that we're not sure of the exact boundaries are. And we don't know if that little sliver property was actually sold out of it or if that was just a kindness access. I mean, I would like to know that the boundaries of that parcel are legit before.
Is that a second one?
If you're making an official motion.
I am, yes.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed?
Aye.
All right, so we need more discussion? No? Okay, motion passes. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the public hearing for SUP-2502 and SPR-2502, a request for a special use permit for a drive-through restaurant. So we'll be introducing the item. Just give me one second. All right, so the applicant Sean Otto is. All right, so the applicant Sean Otto is seeking approval for a special use permit and site plan review to build a new drive-through restaurant at Pickard Square Mall at 911 East Pickard Street. Mr. Otto reached out to the planning department several months ago, inquiring if he could do an infill development on this site since their parking lot is too large and never completely full. The proposed drive-through restaurant would sit in a separate parcel and have its own address, 915 East Pickard Street, at the southwest corner of the site, since zoning does not allow more than one building per parcel. Staff worked with the engineer on the project, Peter DeLeo, to develop a design that completes, that complies with the zoning ordinance to ensure that the applicant did not need to seek variances through the zoning board of appeals. So to show you the map on the premises, this is Pickard Square Mall. And then this proposed site would be on this southeast corner here. The surrounding land uses are a combination of multiple service and commercial establishments on the north building here at the mall. And then Meyer supermarket, the big parking lot on on the north end of this picture. We have Covert's Drive-Thru Restaurant on the east side, an adult-use Marjona retail establishment on the south, and Harbor Freight Hardware Store, the Pickers Square Mall on the west side. And then also Advanced Auto Parts and Dollar Days. So we have the future land use for the area mixed-use medium in City 4 for the zoning district. So these are the current conditions viewed from Pickard Street looking west. Current conditions viewed from Pickard Street looking east. So right here, this existing entrance would be capped and the proposal would sit in this corner. These are the current conditions viewed from the middle of the site looking southeast towards Pickard Street. And then the current conditions viewed from the side street within the Meyer ownership looking south. So this drive would also be capped and the proposal, proposed drive-through restaurant would sit right here. So when looking at the general standards for drive-through establishments, this is obviously an area that we have lots of drive-throughs and we worked intensely with the engineer on this case. We had several pre-application meetings, met with the city engineer, with the Michigan Department of Transportation as well. And we were able to help the applicant comply with zoning and also provide a traffic flow that would be safe for this existing mall and very busy area. So I did not see any issues with the special use general conditions. And then in terms of the specific requirements, the proposal does comply with the 200 feet stacking lane. We do have all the drive-through requirements listed in those sections compliant as well. Those include screening and then parking location, maneuvering lanes, all of those parking-related requirements. And then the last item here, screening, would not apply because we do not have any adjacent residentially zoned parcels or civic zone parcels. So this is the submitted site plan. I try to increase the the size of the area where the building will sit. But basically, the proposal would be to remove one, two, and then three lanes of parking on the existing parking mall, off-street parking area. And then, you know, keep a few here on the north end and then some diagonal parking on the south. The building will sit right at the corner due to zoning ordinance requirements to comply with minimum maximum setback requirements. And then this whole area here would be screened, so the drive-through features have to be screened from streets. So that also applies to the side street here. And then the way it works is you would be able to still access the site from Pickard or the side street. And however, if you are coming into the drive-through establishment, if you're accessing from here, it would go all the way. If you are, if you decide to not go to the drive-through after you're already in the lane, we ask the applicant to build this way out in the middle of the drive-through stacking lane. And then if you do decide to approach, you're just going to have another two cars in front of you after that opportunity is provided, and then you would be able to exit from here. And then we ask them to do this curb here that would restrict folks from exiting through Pickard because that would be, you could you could have conflicts of vehicle flows. So we are gently asking folks to then go up and then go out from this side street or, you know, they are welcome to go to other establishments and then exit from Pickard after going around. So that's something that MDD had required together with the city engineer. Loading would occur over here to service the dumpster that is going to be located over here. And and then in terms of the restaurant, it would have indoor seating area. And it's quite a small footprint, over 2,000 square feet. The the applicant does not have a tenant yet, so that's why you don't see detailed architectural drawings for this case. And so that's why the conditional approval that staff is recommending does include a lot of missing materials that were not submitted yet, just because they don't have a tenant. And so they're going to be working on those details later on, but they wanted to still pursue the special use permit application to see if they can indeed do this infill development. And then they will, they do have a few tenants in mind already for this site, and they would proceed with those negotiations. So in terms of what I just said, I did ask the engineer who's working on this project to provide the planning commission with language on this. So that's what they're saying here. That's why they don't have architectural drawings, that because they did not secure a tenant yet. But they are stating here that they intend to comply with all the ordinance building standards once they do provide elevation drawings and all those materials. So going through the site plan review part of the case, the first item here is that the applicant would need to provide architectural plans, including buildings layout, sections, elevation drawings, for final approval. Landscaping plan would also be required to make sure that the plan materials that are going to be suggested are compliant with the zoning ordinance in city code. And then lighting and signage are also details that they're going to be thinking about later on, and we can approve that as part of the final approval under staff review. No issues with lot occupation or setbacks. We worked intensely with them to make sure that the outlot that is created is complying with the zoning ordinance. Luckily, because we do not have parking requirements, just a a nice note, we are able to do infill development still because you can create that outlot that is narrow enough to accommodate the infill development and still not include off-street parking within that same parcel. So you're going to be operating with a mall that has, you know, a core parking area and then multiple buildings around it, which is nice. With the building standards, there are so many of them. I'm just listing here the ones that I could verify and the ones that I couldn't because I didn't have the architecture plans. So those are the things that are going to be, I'm going to be working with the applicant later to make sure that glazing and the entrance is indeed facing Pickard Street and all of that is compliant. They are complying with the facade build-out requirement, which is a big component of the site plan, so we did check that. For vehicular parking, the, I was not able to see an access easement through our GIS database that would basically formally give access of that drive on the Meyer site onto the proposed site on that northern drive. So we are putting it as a condition of approval that the applicant seeks such easements, so we can record it, make it formal moving forward. The bicycle parking standards, we do have a proposal from the applicant to stripe again, or new 29 spaces as part of the submitted, not additional, they're reducing the number, overall number of parking spaces. But the ones that they are striping are the ones that we use for the bicycle parking calculations. So this, they would need to provide six bicycle parking spots, and that was included as a condition of approval. Private landscaping fencing, they did not propose a tree along the principal frontage. One tree is going to be required as a condition of approval. I will say that I went to the site and I did see that there is an existing tree, so we can actually remove this condition out of this the staff report. So however, they still need to submit a landscaping plan later, as I mentioned, so we can verify the species and details of plan materials. And then in terms of the dumpster, there, I didn't see a designated area for recyclable materials. If I recall correctly, I believe that the applicant will work directly with the tenant to see if they want to do recycling within the building footprint or build that room externally. Worst-case scenario, we can do an update or an amendment to the previously approved site plan in case they want to increase that dumpster size. But that usually really differs depending on the the applicant and business. We do provide flexibility, but we do require everybody to recycle in the state of Mount Pleasant, including commercial, industrial, residential sites. So I put that as a condition of approval as well. And then last, I already mentioned, there was no lighting information. So any proposed lighting would have to comply with our city code, chapter 96.13. So I put that in as well. Overall, we're very excited to bring this case forward because it is an infill development. So we are, you know, increasing square footage of buildings as opposed to parking lots. So it will help us set up new precedent for infill development. And then it's in full compliance with the zoning ordinance. It is on a corner site, so it was much easier for us to make that happen. If you compare that to the previous case that I mentioned in our December meeting, the work session, that was an interior lot, so that that's why it didn't work. But with this site, we were able to make it happen. It will provide a design for car-ended use that is at the same time more pedestrian-friendly. So we do have a connection of the building entrance directly to the sidewalk if you're approaching the site by foot. And then it adds another food option along Pickard, which is a very busy regional commercial corridor, as you know. And then infill developments, they obviously utilize the city's resources more efficiently. So we're trying to work towards sustainability, and then that's one way that we can accommodate sustainability in our land use practices. So with the conditions laid out here in the report, staff, staff's recommendation is to approve special use permit 2502 and site plan review 2502 subject to the following conditions. One, the applicant shall submit a land subdivision application through the clerk's office to split the existing parcel in accordance with the zoning ordinance and other applicable code requirements. Two, the applicant shall submit the following additional documents. A, architectural plans, including the building's layout, sections, and elevation drawings, showing compliance with the ordinance building standards. B, landscaping plan, showing compliance with the ordinance landscaping standards, requirements, sorry. C, updated site plan, ensuring that, I, the proposed bike rack includes at least six bicycle parking spaces. Two, the proposed dumpster enclosure includes space for recycling materials, or the applicant provides a narrative explaining how recycling will be handled on site. Three, any newly proposed lighting complies with chapter 96.13 of the city code. Three, the applicant shall provide a copy of an access easement through the Meyer access drive to the site, to the Department of Public Works. And four, the applicant shall comply with the additional requirements of building safety, public safety, and public works. That concludes my presentation. Thank you. Does the planning commission have any questions to me?
Good job. Good presentation.
Okay, in that case, I will ask the applicant to speak. The applicant is on Zoom tonight. So Peter and Sean, if you want to unmute yourself, you can basically state your name, address, and then provide comments about the proposal that I may have missed or anything that you want to add.
My name is Sean Otto. I'm a developer at Blooffield Health. I got Peter here. He's my architect from Dyna Associates. We worked together on this, on this drive-through. And the reason we did this because it's 170 parking in that in that plaza and probably not even 10% of it has been used. I I know they do Christmas tree and firework there, so we stop, we're going to stop that immediately. And the the harbor freight, we talked to the manager. I mean, they get like, maybe like four, five customer in and out every hour or every half an hour. The church, they only open on Sunday. You got HR block, they open only eight months of the year. The gun shop, I mean, it's not too much traffic there. Tripoli, they don't open on the weekend. So we took advantage of that that situation and we went back on Google Earth and we looked at some old picture of that shopping center and we literally see like 10 parking in every single time we go. And the 10 car in the whole, in the whole plaza. It's 170 parking there. So we like, you know, we put a drive-through there, the nice corridor, Meyer there, good traffic, the corridor the other side. And Manuel and Suzanne, I tell you what, I never had such a good experience working with planning. Those people are phenomenal.
Yeah, absolutely.
We, we, you know, we, they let everything, we did everything they told us to do. And I think we had 15 people on Zoom when that went, I wasn't on the Zoom. I had Shingle, but he was on the Zoom. So I couldn't, I couldn't make it that day. But yeah, they they went through all the question and he he fixed everything that would need to be fixed, and I think that's where we at right now. The only thing about the easement with Meyer, I think we have an existing easement right now, if I'm, if I, if I'm not mistaken. But I'll check on that one. And that's about it. I mean, I think that's going to be a nice building there. It's gonna, you know, it's gonna make, bring more traffic to the shopping center and will increase the value of the property and bring more tax to the city and everybody's going to be happy. We do, we are working with three different national tenants. One of whom is Lee's Chicken and one of whom is Raising Cane. The third one, they don't want to be disclosed, but we're working with the third one. So we'll see which one they're going to land in this building.
Thank you. Can you add your address just for the record, Sean?
6257 Rose Boulevard in West Bluefield, Michigan.
Thank you.
Or or you could use the shopping center one, 513, or the East Pickard Street.
9915.
915 East Pickard Street.
Thank you. Does the planning commission have any questions to the applicant? All right. So now I will open the public comment. If there are any members of the public who wishes to speak on this item, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and you'll be given five minutes to speak. Do we have anyone that wants to speak tonight? Seeing none. I don't see anybody else on Zoom. And I'm going to check email. I don't see any emails that came in. Do we have anyone here that would like to speak on this case? If not, I'll close public comment. Do I have a motion on this item or need for more discussion?
Move to approve SUP-2502 and SPR-2502, subject to the following conditions. One, the applicant shall submit a land subdivision application through the clerk's office to split the existing parcel in accordance with the zoning ordinance and other applicable code requirements. Two, the applicant shall submit the following additional documents. A, architectural plans, including the building's layout, sections, and elevation drawings, showing compliance with the ordinance, ordinance's building standards. B, landscaping plan, showing compliance with the ordinance's landscape requirements. C, updated site plan, ensuring that, one, the proposed bike rack includes at least six bicycle parking places. Two, the proposed dumpster enclosure includes space for recycling materials, or the applicant provides a narrative explaining how recycling will be handled on site. And three, any newly proposed lighting complies with chapter 96.13 of the city code. Three, the applicant shall provide a copy of an access easement through the Meyer Meyer access drive to the site, to the Department of Public Works. And four, the applicant shall comply with additional requirements of building safety, public safety, and public works.
Second.
Aye.
All right, so I will start the next case, which is site plan review for SPR-2501. A request for a site plan review for a new 76,200 square foot warehouse facility. Just give me one second. All right, so. Start here. The applicant Joe Claybone is applying for a site plan review to build a new 76,200 square foot warehouse facility for MLT Transport LLC, which is a trucking company located at 1841 Gover Parkway. Currently, the whole parcel is owned by LaLone Properties LLC, who will continue to own the parcel after the work is completed. However, the LLC plans to lease the new building to another entity to operate the extension of the MLT business. And the applicant will be able to provide more information about that. The proposed site plan includes new one-way-through fares around MLT transport parking areas. I'm going to show you that in a second. And an additional gravel drive around the warehouse building to provide for emergency access. As such, since the site exceeds four acres in size, the project was subject to a development parcel plan, which has been approved administratively on December 5th of 2024. The proposed site also includes required landscaping improvements, private landscaping modifications, new light poles and wall pack lights close to the new facility. Due to its location within Industrial Park South, the project was also subject to the South Industrial Park Review Board, who unanimously approved the project on December 18, 2024. So this is the current area view of the site. And as you can see here, the site is in the industrial South Park area. So it is surrounded by industrial land uses. We have a Mack LTT, stainless division trailer manufacturer on the north end. On the east, it's vacant across the highway. And then on the south, we have Standard Electric Company and Rank Electric. So it's electrical supply and contractor establishments. And then on the west, we have Bill's Custom Fab, Steel Fabricator. The zoning on the parcel and surrounding parcels are SDI, Industrial Special District. These are the current conditions viewed from Gover Parkway looking northeast. Current conditions viewed from Gover Parkway looking southeast. And then while this is their existing facility, behind there is where we're going to see these other pictures. Current conditions viewed from the side looking east to the parcel under development. And the conditions viewed from the side looking north, which is the parcel under development is located to the east of that picture. So you can see here the existing asphalted area and then where they're doing some earthwork to start the site plan once they get the approval. So this is the proposed site plan. And there are several sheets. Obviously, it's a very large proposal here. The new building will sit again at the end of the parcel. And here is the highway. The way we were able to accommodate emergency access was the fire department asked them to provide overall a 20-foot-wide gravel access around the whole building. But where we have the hydrant, they did ask the applicant to provide a 26-feet-wide access area. Therefore, we did update the packet today after receiving an updated site plan that includes that widened access area right here in the south end. And then they are proposing, they also added some things here for us, including the bicycle rack, which will be located over here, close to ADA parking that they're proposing. And then one thing that's very different from what they had before is the addition of this access that kind of surrounds the whole parcel here. So it will go there if needed and then here. In that way, they are able to keep all the parking and they have the semi trucks over here, trailer parks on both ends. And then we did have some landscaping modifications. There were some existing spruce trees that were removed to be able to provide that access that was subject to the development parcel plan review and approval. And then they are adding more trees to comply with our current tree standards for SDI districts. So after the applicant provided with an updated site plan and drawings, all the kind of standards that were not met initially were met. So I don't have anything underlined. So I'm just going to flip through this. And I did include the development parcel plan application and approval for your reference. The only reason I refer to it in the staff report, you know, recommendation for approval is because we did have other departments providing comments at that first review as opposed to the second review. So it's just to make sure that the applicant will comply with all the requirements from all departments moving forward. But I didn't see anything outstanding with this, with everything that they provided thus far. And we worked for months, or I'll say years, since we actually had the very first pre-application meeting. All right, so this is a summary of the vote at the South Industrial Park Review Board. We did have the four board members voting yes. And I apologize for the typo here. It shall say SPR 2501. Thank you. So with the analysis in this report and presentation here, staff is recommending that the planning commission approves SPR-2501, subject to the following conditions. One, the applicant shall comply with the approved development parcel plan 2401 and its conditions. Two, the applicant shall comply with the requirements of public works. That concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, let me know.
I'm sorry. Maybe there was an update I didn't see, but the staff recommendation is a little bit different. I'm just assuming we'll go with what's here as opposed to.
So yeah, we did an update on the packet just in the end of this afternoon. It's online, but you probably printed before that happened.
Yeah.
The applicant did provide an update to the site plan and then information with the dumpster enclosure, including the recycling container, as well as the area for general waste. And then the bicycle parking information that was missing as well.
Great. Thank you. Sorry.
That's fine. Any other questions? Okay, so at this time, we can invite the applicant to speak on their case.
Go over to science two.
My name is Pete Lorenz, Lorenz Surveying and Engineering. I'm the civil engineer that prepared the set of plans. Just want to comment that the city has been very accommodating. Staff has been very good to work with going through this approval process. I think we've been able to correct most things that we've came across so far. I think we're in pretty good shape. Basically, what the owner wants to do is utilize the back portion of this property right now that's undeveloped. It's really not being used to its potential use. We're going in and putting warehousing in there. We're providing something I think that's very needed in the area. And ultimately, I think it's going to be a benefit to the whole area. One of the changes that we did have on the site was, originally, we weren't looking at doing the traffic going all the way around the outside. We went ahead and added the driveways along both sides in order to avoid any impact, I guess, that could be to the existing operation there with the shop and the offices that are there. We've looked at truck turning movements on the site. We will have big panel trucks in and out here. So we've looked at all those movements. We're comfortable that they'll be able to accommodate the site or make it around the site without too many, without any issues. We have some loading docks in front of the building there. We've looked at those. City engineer, we do have a few things that we're going to address yet with city engineering as far as the review goes there. But I don't see any hurdles that we can't get over as far as DPW review. There are no stormwater detention requirements on this site because it already has detention at the north end of the property. We put a storm sewer in along the north property line to collect our runoff to make sure we're not creating harmful runoff on the adjoining parcels. This building will be sprinkled fire suppression system. There's an existing water main that we're looking to extend. Sanitary sewer, there's sanitary sewer available and it's deep enough. We can get it back to the back part of the property with no issues there to serve the property. So I guess, does anybody have any questions?
Can you please state your address for the record?
Oh, sorry. 3229 West Beale City Road, Wademan, 48893. The owner is here also, if you have, and the building designer, so.
Any questions to the applicant or the owner? All right. So I guess I'll now open to discussion. Thank you.
Public comment first.
Oh, no.
Size of you.
Yeah, no public hearing. Thank you.
I'll move to approve SPR 2501, subject to the following conditions. One, the applicant shall comply with approved developmental parcel plan 2401 and its conditions. And two, the applicant shall comply with the requirement of public works.
Second.
All right, do we have all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, so the next item on our agenda is public comment. Members of the public are invited to come forward and address the planning commission. We typically reserve this time for comments that are not related to a public hearing case being presented this evening. If you wish to speak, please come forward and state your name and address for the record, and you'll be given five minutes. Do we have anyone here that wants to speak tonight? All right, seeing none. I don't see anybody on Zoom or email. So if there's anyone to speak, I'll close public comments. Okay, so the next item on our agenda is new business. A request for a one-year extension of SPR-2217 for 1219 North Mission Street. So this was a site plan that got approved before my time. The requested action here is for the planning commission to approve this one-year extension. While it's been a while since the project was initially approved, which was on September 1st, 2022, with a revision approved by the planning commission at the subsequent meeting on October 6, 2022, we did have the applicant providing progress since that time. So since I joined the city, they did apply for a development parcel plan 2301, which was approved by staff on June 19, 2023. That included a larger area of Mr. Wilson's properties. And after that, Mr. Wilson did apply for SPR 2317, which is a minor site plan for the extension of an existing roof structure at 1217 North Mission, which they already completed construction for that. I did include all those approvals that are mentioned here in the slides in your packet in case you want to refer to any one of them. But the, yeah, basically, I would like to know if the planning commission would like to grant a one-year extension so they can start construction on this building addition.
How many one-year extensions can people get?
Just one.
Okay.
Yeah, so this will be it.
This question may be unrelated to this, but I noticed that we've approved quite a few plans and nothing happened in terms of they either decided not to do projects because of, is there a reason why there was so little construction in town last year?
Oh, in general, right? Not about Mr. Wilson's.
Not about this one in particular, but.
Um, I believe that, from what I've heard, at least on the housing end, I have a very specific comment on the housing end. Anytime there are elections, folks tend to not develop. But I think from projects that we've approved in this past year, there is one that comes to mind, which was a marijuana establishment that maybe marketed is, you know.
Okay, I don't want to mention a name, but there was a big project that we approved and it didn't happen.
In the industrial area or?
Close to the industrial area.
Okay. I'm not sure.
You might need to be specific.
I'll look, I'll look over.
I'll ask you about that. It just struck me that we approved things and then nothing happened.
Right, yeah, sometimes with the large developments, I guess, just, you know, construction cost is increasing so much. It's hard to find folks to do those things. So in this case, they do have the capability to do buildings and the building extension is something they did in-house. But yeah, I think it's a, it's a matter of putting the financials together. Oh, there is one project that I can think of, which is Mecop Tire. We're still discussing with them. They know of the deadline. They haven't applied to, for any, you know, site plan reviews or anything, or sorry, building permits or anything like that. So they know that the site plan will lapse if they don't provide us with any, yeah.
Okay, because they seem to be hot. Like they really wanted to get going on as soon as we approved it, then nothing, so.
Yeah, yeah, we are keeping, we're continuing to talk with them. And the DDA, since they got the project approved, the DDA board has approved two programs to facilitate driveway closures and building renovations, which actually does include assistance with new construction for the building to comply with zoning. So they are seeing a bit of a financial hardship to perceive of the project. It came out being much more expensive than what they originally anticipated. So that was a particular issue for that project. And so we're trying to find tools out there to assist the owner.
Okay, I was kind of wondering if it was a cost issue.
Yeah, yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
I just ran into, we work with a lot of schools in what I do. And there's, there were, oh, there were a couple of school districts that had started construction projects, but ended up having significant delay of, because they needed very specific building materials. And there's still, while things aren't, they're better, but they haven't fully recovered to like quantity of supplies and availability and costs of, you know. And so, you know, some of those schools, they didn't even, like a new building didn't open until, like it's about to open, like instead of in the fall, you know, so there's.
It's not just here then, it's, okay.
Christine, can you please confirm if you meant to say that didn't recover since COVID?
Yes.
Just for the minutes.
Yes, where, where there were.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right, do we have any further discussion on this case?
I'll move to approve a one-year extension to SPR 2217.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, the next item on the agenda is the staff report. So I just wanted to officially report that the Crawford and Brumfield Resoning Proposal was voted down by the city commission at the December 9, 2024 meeting. It was very close, three to four. We did have in support Mayor Perschbacker, Vice Mayor Alsager and Commissioner Chapman. And against Commissioner Rollins, Commissioner Akic, Commissioner Winger and Commissioner Bush. The main reason that they stated in the meeting for denial, and they did include the draft minutes for everybody to be able to access them, is mostly a concern of the 30 out of the 157 acres being zoned as a civic zone. The argument for that concern is mostly the impact on the overall city's tax base. And then they, one commissioner, Commissioner Winger, did state in the end of the meeting that they would still like, or he would still like to see the PRD agreement terminated. And I believe there was general consensus on that. The idea here to map hardline zoning instead. So it does seem like they're open to that idea. And also definitely opened to the idea to have more housing development in the area. So I do not have any plan next step at this time, but I will be discussing this with the city manager, see how we proceed. I think at this time, I'm not going to do a work session on this, but I will come back to you if I have any clearance on how to move forward for this project. And then just to state also the commercial part of the designation on the corner. I didn't get, I wasn't able to get from all the commissioners if that is a yes or a no, if there's consensus on that. So I believe that we will need to discuss this further with them. Yeah, so that concludes that staff report presentation. Yeah, so that concludes the staff report presentation. And then the next item on the agenda is the administrative approvals. So since our last meeting, we had SPR-2422 for 302 North Kinney. It's the Sacred Heart Parish, and their approval was on November 11, 2024. They are enclosing a grotto space and have proposed new plantings on the west side of the existing building, which is just private landscaping, but also relocating existing street trees to provide for a better view of the grotto. They would like for it to be able to be seen from the sidewalk, so they did some landscaping arrangements for that. And then they are also proposing a fence to kind of, yeah, protect that area. And then the next project was SPR-2423 for 400 South Crepeau Street. The owner is Mount Pleasant Senior Leasing LLC, approval date December 6, 2024. The proposal was for a 1,005 square foot addition to be used as a laundry room at the Laurel's Healthcare Facility. I'm circulating the addition here, which is a small addition considering it's a very large facility for their laundry room. And then they did some access changes as well. And then the last one is SPR-2424 for 3727 South Isabella. The owner is Isabella Land Management LLC, and the approval date was December 26, 2024. The proposal was for a new dumpster enclosure for the building that Cowingskey Construction built on the site. And they are adding that dumpster enclosure to accommodate a new tenant, which will be a garage door service company. And they needed that dumpster enclosure. So that concludes the presentation. Any questions?
Any idea about what the school plans to do going forward?
The school?
Considering that, like, it seemed clear to me that even under the PRD, they could have just put the school there anyway.
I can answer that. I talked to one of the people involved in that. It's, they're not organized to actually purchase land for the school yet. But what I was told is, we'll look elsewhere. That's what their plan is.
Yeah.
So that school will be going elsewhere at some point.
I actually heard another story. Or, you know, my contact is one person who has been, you know, coming to the pre-application meetings. She's also in the school board. The, I mean, I'm sure that that's true, but just one information to share with you all is that they have searched for a location for the past three to four years at this point. Their original intention was to find an existing facility, that they could just do some upgrades and then move in. They were not able to find anything that is suitable for a school. And just in terms of sharing my personal example on something similar was to try to find a place for a daycare, because I was in a childcare coalition, and we were trying to increase daycares in Mount Pleasant. The building code requirements for school facilities and daycares are just enormous, right? With emergency and fire safety and all of that. So it's very, very difficult to find inventory. In terms of vacant parcels, they have looked elsewhere. Were not able to get a go, you know, from other municipalities. So they did come to Mount Pleasant for that particular facility. Yeah, so they didn't give me a hard no on that yet, but didn't say that they would like to proceed in another way, if that's in the toolbox.
Are they gonna hold a vote to dismiss the PRD? Or are they waiting, is the city commission gonna wait for us to do something else?
So they would like, my feeling from that meeting was that they would like to proceed with an alternative. The only issue that I have right now is the zoning ordinance itself says that we cannot have the same parcel applying for a rezoning within the next year unless there's new information that's learned or conditions changed, a change of some sort. So if there is any new type of information that comes into play, I will definitely speak with the city attorney and see if we can reapply for a rezoning with amendments of any kind in terms of use or zoning designation. But yeah, I did see an appetite. At this point, what I can share is, I believe it would be helpful to have a work session with the city commission, because I did hear from all of you that it was a yes. We had consensus in the planning commission for pursuit of the hardline zoning. But, and then we did have consensus with the termination of the PRD agreement, which did have all those only designations already built with the termination agreement. And we did get a yes from the city commission unanimously. But then we got, you know, more than half saying no in the very end.
Maybe that's when they read it.
So that's why we need a work session, I think, to troubleshoot, you know, what the issues are indeed and what, where are they comfortable with. And I will definitely come to you first before proceeding with any alternative for that big parcel.
I'm sorry, dumb question. The PRD is dissolved, correct?
No.
Did not dissolve.
It was contingent upon the zoning being put in place.
Yes. So the zoning ordinance right now states that if a PRD is terminated, then the parcels will go automatically to Agricultural Special District. That is not the intention of the master plan. So to protect that intention of the master plan, the city added the language in the PRD termination to only be valid after a rezoning, as proposed, is also approved. So whatever is approved first, and then the city attorney instructed me to get the termination approval first so we can get signatures from property owners and then proceed with the rezoning petition. But because that failed, then we are back to step zero.
Move to adjourn.
Alright.
Second.
Second. Alright, meeting adjourned, 8:24.